All right, welcome everyone. And had a few technical difficulties, but we are now going to call to order our board meeting. Hello, everyone. So, we are now at 1.2 and we're going to have the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask the someone, if you could lead us in the pledge tonight.
Please stand. Park. Pledge. A belief is with the flag. The Republic. The nation.
Thank you. At this time, we will now move to 1.3 approval of the agenda. And Ms. Cunningham, I do want to ask, will we be receiving it online or taking voice votes?
It should be working online.
So moved.
Been moved and that was a second by who did the second? Dr. Flores? Did you do the second? I can barely hear you. Did you do the second?
I did second.
All right, it is now showing up.
Madam President, so we just approve it?
Yes, it will show up on your screen and you will vote right on your screen. All right, there, I was looking at this screen and there it is over there. Thank you so much. All right. For having extra talk. Okay, we're now moving to 1.4 inspirational message. And I will be doing the inspirational message this evening and I'm very happy to do that. I'm excited about my inspiration. There was some wonderful news that came to me. And I first want to say, being back here for the first time is again a reminder of how long it's been. I can recall that emergency board meeting, March the 17th, 2020. And we had to come together to outline what our next steps would be during this COVID-19 pandemic. At the time, we didn't know the magnitude of it, but we did realize that we had students and staff and family and each of us, it was important for us to remain safe and do what was right for an entire large district. But more importantly in that, we asked our students to do something they had never done before. We asked our students to stay home and log in for their educational experience until it was safe to return. And so today, I would like to introduce to you my inspiration. Ms. Summer Fox. She is a junior who moved to Southern California in 2019 as a freshman from Chicago. She said the school she was attending was not assigning her the correct classes and she was falling behind in credits as the classes the schools were giving her. They were not counting towards her credits. When Fox moved to San Bernardino area, she attended Pacific and then ultimately she attended San Andreas. She was able to get on track there with her credits. According to Principal Dory Stratton, Fox did so well in this year's San Andreas summer school program that she will graduate high school early and skip her senior year as she has earned enough credits. Fox says she wants to be her own boss and start her own business along with getting into marketing. Fox said San Andreas has a homey feel and because of the smaller student population, the teachers can help more students when they need it. So I want to thank Highland News, who will be featuring her in the newspaper. I also want to thank San Andreas, the principal and the staff. And I'm going to ask Summer Fox and her mother and her brother, who is here with us, to come forward at this time, come to the dais right here in front and have words. We are so very, very proud of you. And let's give her a hand as she's coming. Yes, that mic should be on.
I would just like to say that, um, thank you all so much for recognizing me first and foremost. And it's, I just want to say that it's really all about strategy when you, it's about mindset and strategy. So if you put your mind to something, you can do it, anything, and that's what I did. I had a goal this year to get all As, um, because I know that freshman year and sophomore year wasn't the best. So I knew I had to do something and I did that. And I just feel very accomplished and yeah.
Thank you so much for coming here tonight. Thank you. Your mother, we're so proud of you. It is my understanding she is looking at an HBCU, um, somewhere in the area of Clark, Atlanta, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So we will be following you and your brother, who is attending Hillside, correct? Is it Hillside? Okay. And we are just so excited for you. We know it's been a difficult, difficult, um, year, but yet you prevailed and you are an example of a true inspiration. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight.
Thank you.
And as I conclude my inspiration, I also, last but not least, would like to introduce Myra Sabios to the dais tonight. This is her first, um, night with us and we are just excited to see you as well. This is Myra. So a lot can change in 15 months, but here we are. So thank you so much for allowing me to give the inspiration tonight. We're now going to, um, adjourn, prepare 2.1 to go to our closed session. Are there any? Here in closed session?
No, there are no comments.
There are none. All right, so 2.2 adjourn to closed session and we will see you all shortly. Okay, we are now going to resume. We're at 3.0 reconvening from our open session to our open session. And we're at 3.1 Deputy Superintendent, HR. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employees. Deputy Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent's Office Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be determined. It's been moved in second and let's prepare to vote.
Can the audience hear us? Can you hear us talking? Can you hear the president talking?
I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you too.
I can't really hear you.
I thought they nodded. He's saying yes.
Okay.
I can hear the echo.
It's hard to hear.
Okay, we can go ahead and vote on the screen? All right, motion carried. We are now at 3.2 Assistant Superintendent Equity Access and Innovation.
So moved.
Be, be, let me just, let me read it real quick. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee, Assistant Superintendent Equity Access and Innovation Effective Date, Work Year and Salary to be determined.
Madam President. So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Motion carried. Thank you. We are now at 4.1 Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Pursuant to the provision of the Governor's Executive Order in 2920 dated March 17, 2020, certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act are suspended. If you would like to make a live comment at district board meetings, a registration form is required. Form can be, forms can be found on the district's website and Facebook. This registration form is available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and will close at 4:30 on the day of the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person and all comments submitted on one subject will be provided, no more than 30 minutes total. A timer will be visible on the screen during your comments. We ask that you monitor your time. Participants are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration and they will immediately be removed from the meeting. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Mrs. Cunningham, are there any public comments? All right, and these are in person. I don't believe, I guess there's no others. These are, all right, the first person I'm calling is Irma Garcia.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh. Okay, I'll speak louder. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, good evening, Dr. Rogers and Dr. Wyatt and members of the board and everyone who's here present. Um, so I come before you to briefly share about changes in the Personnel Commission Office during this past fiscal year and share some accomplishments, especially during the COVID pandemic from July 2020 through 30th. I know that it was longer, but we covered our report around that. Some of our accomplishments and celebrations I wanted to share with you all is, um, some staffing changes in our department. Also included, uh, and there is George Bond, Commission Member, who was, um, starting a new term and serving a new term in our department. Uh, a new personal director was appointed. That was me. They appointed me July 2020 last year. We also have a new personnel analyst appointed by the Commission last November 2020. Um, we also have a new associate personnel analyst. A start date is to be determined. Right now, she's currently in the background process. So, um, the Personnel Commission Office was relocated to the Wab building, 1525 Highland Avenue, over the portable at the Wab building. And so, um, staff had to innovate processes to, um, continue recruitment, testing, interviews, along with other systems in our department. Many forms were digitized and eliminated almost 100% paper trail. So we were able to communicate with our applicants and communicate with our managers electronically. Personnel Commission staff stayed very busy and worked very hard while working remotely, caring out business as best as possible with filling positions as deemed essential by cabinet. We communicated on a regular basis with Dr. Funches and his team and we worked very closely. During the year, 69 recruitments were opened and for classified positions, applications received and reviewed, almost 4,500 applications. And administered, we administered 69 tests. Um, eligibility lists ratified by the Commission were a total of 41. We reclassified to employees, classified employees. We conducted 12 desk audits virtually. We also, uh, conduct, facilitated discipline hearings, two of them, and, uh, staff conducted multiple mass interviews. And so there were upwards of 140 classified hires in our district. Those include promotions, voluntary transfers, voluntary demotions, sub to regular, new hires, et cetera. I just wanted to close and say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My team and I are very happy to be back in the office in person. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update.
Fascinating. Can I take the mask off or I still gotta wear it?
On the policy inside, I believe we're wearing masks. They know you're, unless security is saying something different. Want to bring it down?
I bring it down? Okay.
Make sure.
Okay. Madam Toastmaster, fellow board members and my name is Francisco Ramirez. I am a single dad of three kids. Uh, two of my kids actually attend a elementary school here, um, within the district. Uh, you know, I like to read a lot. Um, and once in a while, there's an article that maybe catches my attention, right? And one of those articles was recently written, um, from the Orange County Registry Office and, um, it points out somewhere, you know, Unified School District. And every time when something gets pointed out, I was like, oh, something got pointed out. It catches my attention because it kind of, it affects me in a way. So, and one of the things that, um, was shared, um, was our funding being spent on law enforcement. Um, I believe it was cited in 9.5 million, um, that we spent last year, last fiscal year. Um, and honestly, I'm not here to point fingers or say, why are we spending so much money? Um, I had the honor, uh, really, uh, to speak to Joe Paulino a few minutes ago. Um, he can enlighten me a little bit more where the funding is going and being allocated. But I still believe, um, it's a lot of money being spent on law enforcement. Um, I believe a lot of the funding is building relationships, really. Um, I think we have, this is not a lie. We have a high crime rate in San Bernardino, right? It's not sugarcoat that. It's a reality. Uh, we were having deaths, dad, mom, cousin, losing lives, right? So what are we as a district doing to provide, uh, trauma-informed resources to those kids that are suffering mental health? Um, I think it's time as a district, as a board, to unmask mental health. Um, let's not point fingers, really. Let's find a solution. Um, I believe, um, there's a lot of work to do here in San Bernardino. I believe there's a lot of talent here in San Bernardino. I believe there's an opportunity for us to build talent here in San Bernardino. I think we just had a great camp. I'm gifted. Did any of you guys attend that great camp that was done by our Minnesota Viking? Okay, great. That's great. I mean, those are the kind of things that we're looking forward. I don't want to move out of San Bernardino. I want my kids to be raised here. Um, I was born and raised in Fresno. I grew up with no services. I grew up in a little ranch. And just the reason, just sharing that, I don't have two more minutes. Um, those are the one topics I want to share is, is to fill, and maybe sit on the board. I love the fact that in our last meeting, uh, someone shared that we're going to have subcommittee meetings regarding budgets. We're going to give an opportunity for parents, shareholders, community members to come and sit on the table. I love that. Um, as a parent, I love it because it gives me a chance to share my voice. I hope that the board is considerate of my time. I am unemployed. I work eight to five. Some schools are not lenient with my work schedule because they meet at 10 o'clock on Friday and there's no exceptions. And I think that should change, especially for the parent like myself. And we should have a meeting after hours. If you need to flex your time, flex your time. I do that all the time. Does that make sense? We need to start working more as a relationship building. Uh, we need to start working as a team. And I'm just talking about you, board member, our board members. I'm talking about the parent. And it's time to hold our child's, our children accountable. And that starts with mine. Right? And the second thing I want to share, because I have one minute, um, in our last meeting on June 8th, we talked about budget. Didn't we talk about the budget? Did we talk about the budget? Okay, we talked about the budget, right? And Dr. Irvin shares something. He says, "The average district has 18-point something as a reserve." San Bernardino has about 4%. It's approximate. It's not an official number. About 4% leaning take. I agree, Dr. Irvin, that we need to allocate on our reserve. We need to have a backup plan. Um, let's not be on the papers. Let's talk, let's talk good things about San Bernardino. I think it's time. We have great talent. We've got great people living in San Bernardino. And I just want to come and share, it's the first time I come in front of a board. Um, honestly, I think I'm, I want to bring more kids to talk in the board. I think we need to hear voices, uh, we need to build a survey. And I say it because I run, I used to run a family research center. And I ask kids, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, what they wanted. Tell me your feedback. I want to hear you. You, what you want. Clown music. The point is, is start working in relationships. Um, let's move San Bernardino forward. Let's transform San Bernardino. Um, I'm excited about the new superintendent. Welcome aboard. Uh, I've been reading about you. I look excited.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. And Mr. Ramirez, on the times that you refer to, was that parent meeting times or working times when you said the meeting is early? What meeting were you referring to?
It's my own elementary.
For you as a parent?
Yes, me as a parent.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, and our next speaker is Thomas Wagner.
Gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be here back in person. No computer screens, live, live people are always better. Glad to be here. I just had a really quick question, um, hoping I can get it answered before I'm out of here tonight. My son's been in Chavez in the middle years program. He was supposed to at some point sign up for Cajon.
Can you move the mic a little closer so I can, I'm sorry, or a little closer?
Sorry about that. Normally I'm yelled at for being too loud, so I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. Could you start again because I didn't hear any? I'm so sorry.
Okay. Um, my son's been, um, enrolled at Chavez for the last three years. My oldest just graduated from Cajon. I've got a junior at Cajon. At some point in time, I think the teachers were supposed to ask students where they were going or at least send out something to the parents. We never got this notification, so instead he's being put at Pacific online. And I understand that there are, that trying to go back into person after being gone on digital is difficult. Um, and it says, uh, transfers will be, requests are being accepted, um, but they're not going to be approved till sometime in September. And I find that counterintuitive and counterproductive. I mean, I know I can't be the only parent facing this. If we have a couple hundred or even just a thousand, 1,500 kids, I think it's counterintuitive and productive to getting them back into a good, a good rhythm and program by having to uproot them from a school a month later. Um, is there any possible solution to this being done before the kids go back to school or earlier in the school year before we start disrupting a whole lot of schedules? Um, and that's my biggest concern. I mean, I've got two vehicles. My wife and I are blessed enough to be partially retired at this point in time. So if I have to run students to two different schools, it doesn't create that much of a burden for us, but I know there's other families out there who don't have that privilege, who don't have that ability. Um, and again, it just seems counterintuitive and productive to start kids on this path and then ship them to a whole nother school, all new teachers, all new classes, all new expectations.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. What I, what I did was I jotted down the information and I can provide this to our superintendent, who will give it to the necessary department concerning the movement, the, the non-notification that you didn't get for your student transferring from NYPD to Cajon was the expectation, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Dr. Rodriguez, will, will someone in her office will reach out to you on your way? If you get a chance, you can let, um, Ms. Rodriguez know, Norm Rodriguez right there, know your name, information, and then we'll get back with you.
I know I've talked with somebody at the district a couple times. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention because I think it's counterintuitive and counterproductive.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll have him reach out.
Have a question?
Go ahead.
Um, did you say you have a, that there is a sibling at Cajon already?
Yes, they do. Um, my, my oldest just graduated, um, but my middle child, she's going to be a junior this year at Cajon.
He's at Cajon already?
Yeah. Yeah, she's at Cajon already. And so it's my son who's going in. And I'm not sure when they did the school registration, if the child was supposed to put what school that they were going to be going to, or if there was a form supposed to be sent out to parents.
And I just want to, I just want to say that this, we can't talk, it's not, it's not agenda, but I do want to make sure that
Yes.
we as a district have made it a priority to keep siblings together.
Yeah.
So if you have a student at Cajon, we should do everything possible to make sure the other siblings.
Yeah. And my concern isn't that he's not going to get in there. He's been part of the NYPD program.
I understand your concern. We're going to take care of it. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, our next speaker, I believe, is virtual. And that's Lindsay Lavelle.
She's no longer online?
Not online, okay. Was that the only other one? Okay. All right. If that concludes our public comments, we'll now move to 5.1 Public Hearing and Adoption of the 2021, 2022 Inland Career Center School Calendar. I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
No, there's not.
All right. I will close the public hearing. Be it resolved that the Board of Education receives and adopts the 21, 2021, 2022 Inland Career Center I C E C School Calendar.
You need a motion, Madam President?
Yes, I do.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. All right, motion carried. Thank you. We're now moving to 5.2 Public Hearing and Adoption of the 2022, 2023 Traditional School Calendar. I will open the hearing. Are there any comments?
No, there's none.
Yeah, I'll close the hearing. Be it resolved that the Board of Education receives and accepts the 2022, 2023 Traditional School Calendar?
So moved.
And Dr. Flores?
Second.
Ah, she got you, Ms. Sabios. All right, motion carried. Thank you. We're now moving to 6.0 Reports and Comments by Union Organizations. We are now at 6.1 San Bernardino Teachers Association. They're representative. Okay. We will move to 6.2 California School Employees Association. They're representative tonight. Nation mode. We will now move to 6.3 Communication Workers of America. Oh, are you representing tonight? Come one down. Come one down. Welcome.
You're, you're representing the CSEA or the communications worker?
Oh, CSEA.
Right, okay.
CSEA, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll take it. We'll go back to 6.0.
Um, I was at home and I, first of all, I want to say thank you for having us speak tonight. My name is Ben Sagato. I'm second VP, CSEA, over, um, 2,000 members and growing. And hopefully by next year, we'll have another thousand. Our, uh, records. Um, I want to say thank you, Gwen, your friends, Danny, again, Dr. Flores, everybody. Um, today I was thinking, uh, I was at the house and they said I had a speech. And I, I was like, man, I wish it was on Zoom. But, uh, we got to move forward and get back to in-person, which I, I agree. We need to move forward. So I started writing down what I was going to say. And then it came to me, I'm not going to write it down. I'm just going to speak from the heart. I want to speak what I feel because it's real. I don't want nothing I say to be pictured or, you know, pre-written or anything like that. I want the real deal. I want to rest assured that we hear things, you know, rumors go around. We hear that there's certain, there's a lot of rumors that a lot of people are not happy with the way the grounds or the schools are looking when it comes to, on the way they look, the, the street appeal. Rest assured that the grounds department during the virus worked during the virus. We were out there. We didn't have the opportunity to be on Zoom. We couldn't be on Zoom. We were out there in the hundred and fourteen degree weather, hundred and fifteen degree weather. Um, we're scrambling to look for vehicles. If it wasn't for Sam, Joe, Vidal, Tom, to help us get vehicles with air conditioning, we're, we're, we're out there. We have them. You know, we have vehicles out there and it's hot. It's hot out there. And it's downpouring out here. We're up to the water and our, up to our knees. I'm sorry if the schools don't look up to par, but I want to rest, I want you guys to know that we're out there and we're doing the best we can under the circumstances. I took it personal because I take my job personal. I take it with pride. I take it with joy, and I don't like hearing that. Um, anyways, I just, I just want to say, I want to say thank you to all the classified at the MNO Department, everybody that came back. Um, plumbing, painting, uh, maintenance, they're all out there doing a good job. You know, a lot of you guys are my friends, my colleagues. I mean, and I give respect, we're respected given, and you guys know me, like I coach baseball. I give back to my community. I just want you to know that in order for us to get more productive, we need to, we've got a lot of positions in the grounds department that are working out of class right now because we don't have positions getting filled. So we need those positions to get filled today or yesterday, not tomorrow. And that's where the problem is. We have like fourteen guys on our grounds department running a hundred, hundred sites. And they wanted in and turn around. And until we could get all those guys that are working out of class back into grounds, we're just going to do the best I can. But just rest assured that we got guys working seven days a week right now that are, are out there doing it. And I'm pretty sure they want to be at baseball games and, and things with their family too, you know? They don't have the opportunity of working from. I just want to thank all you guys for being good friends and things like that. We have, uh, one more other thing I want to bring up is that we're still working on the custodian runs. Who's getting ready to start? We haven't, we haven't even touched, touched that. When it comes to that, that's something very important. Um, and also, we haven't even started with our negotiation for raises. Or if we're going to talk about it, we haven't had a cost of living in two years. Like, you know? And so they said, well, this year they're going to add it. But gas prices is going up, everything's going up. And we, we don't, we don't say we're not going to come into work today. No, we're giving a service, you know? And we understand, we're blessed for our jobs. We're thankful for our jobs, but we'd like to give more to our families too. Thank you guys for your time. God bless and have a good night.
Thank you, Ben. Good to see you. And thank you for all you do. Oh, I'm sorry, there's a question. You come back. We're going to get those dots eventually.
I know, we're going to need some way to, we'll, I'll have a hand. No, thank you so much for speaking and really doing what you need to do when everybody was in lockdown. I mean, thank you so much. And I know, uh, it is, it has been hot. So I wanted to clarify with you, uh, so it, do the department that you're working in, or do you see some of the workers do not have access to those vehicles? I know that you mentioned that.
I want to give, I want to give, and that's what I said, when it comes to the vehicles, we have vehicles that don't have air conditioning. But I really want to give a great big thank you to Sam, Joe, Vidal, and Tom that do go out there and make sure that we're not using those vehicles. But with us not being able to ride two together and things like that, it makes it hard. And right now, they're not, they're not making vehicles. So, you know, they're not making vehicles. They don't have the chips for them.
And so you, and then you said there's workers that are actually working seven days a week with them?
There's some are working like, you know, seven, six days a week, seven days a week. I mean, I'm a, I'm a travel ball parent, so I, I'm always gone. So unfortunately for me, that's not a option.
Well, thank you for, for sharing.
Um, Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for all the work. Please let everybody know, we, we appreciate it. And, um, it's been hard on everybody, but I, and, you know, we support you. Uh, we know that.
We know you do.
Yeah, we support you and we, you know, we just appreciate you very, very much. And, uh, we do want you to have the right equipment. We do want you to have, you know, the workers to get everything done. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work and, uh, it's a big district and it's, um, huge. But just, just let people know like you're doing, so.
And, and, and we, 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 we also thank the ones that do stick up for us, Ms. Flores. We really appreciate it. We know that you, Danny Tillman, Abigail, Gwen, you know, all you, if I miss any, use that sticker for the classified. We, we watch it and I watch it. And it's a talk when we go, when we go back.
Right.
They're like, oh, she's, did you see her? You know what I mean? Sometimes we need somebody to be a bigger voice than what we have.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I gotta go move my Corvette that Danny parked in the wrong place.
Okay, 6.4 San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative tonight? Okay, they're giving me no, but thank you for all you do as well. All right, before I go to reports and presentation 7.0, um, as we are adjusting virtual versus in-person, um, I, um, was failed in my, a couple of things here. One, I want to start by saying, um, welcome Superintendent Irvin to the district and to the boardroom and to our official on the dais. Okay, we want to welcome him. Secondly, we did have two appointments tonight, and I want to introduce, reintroduce our deputy superintendent, Dr. Monares. You're more, you're more waving virtually than anything, so congratulations. And also to Dr. Escavell, um, for E, our Equity Access and Innovations Assistant Superintendent.
Doctor Rogers, can you give his full name?
Rick, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Ricardo Escavell. Did I say that right? Dr. Escavell.
I'm sure a lot of people want to Google him.
Okay. Welcome to you all tonight. And, you know, again, we're going to get used to being in person again. Okay, I will now move to 7.0 Reports and Presentation 7.1 State Budget Report. And am I turning it over to, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Sell, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Sellins will be providing the district with a state budget report update.
Welcome again.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Yes, and everyone watching again, this will soon to be, okay? Our CBO now has changed and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Board President, Dr. Doughty Rogers, Board Members, Cabinet, Audience Members. This evening, I will be providing an update on the 2021, 2022 State, sorry, State Budget. Next slide. So before I start, I'd, I'd like to reflect on a quote from John F. Kennedy that I think really encapsulates what we've experienced over this last year and a half with uncertainty and change, uh, being the order of the day. And this in particular is no different than what we experienced with the state budget over the past year, going from historic deficits to historic surpluses. But what I would like to commend the governor and the legislature on is their commitment to prioritizing education funding throughout the pandemic, uh, whether it was good times or bad times. Next slide. So here are the topics we're going to cover this evening. As mentioned earlier, we're going to, uh, discuss the state budget update, um, as well as the impacts to the, uh, San Bernardino City budget. And then we're going to talk a little bit about what's not in the budget and discuss our next steps going forward. Next slide, please. So what's different this year from recent years is the budget adoption timeline, um, where the legislature this year passed a budget placeholder so that they could meet their statutory deadline of June 15th. And if, if you read the newspaper, that statutory deadline is important in, for one reason, it's so that they can continue to receive their paycheck. So this placeholder bill really was a shell of a budget bill. Although the governor did approve it, there were subsequent cleanup bills, uh, AB 129 in particular, that really spoke to the actual budget agreement between the governor and the legislature. In addition, the legislature added language to amend AB 138 to provide relief to the historic increases in unemployment insurance rates, uh, for the 21, 22 school year. And finally, the budget trailer bill language that was just released yesterday, as well as the AB 129 and AB 138 have yet to receive approval, uh, through the legislature and move on to the governor for, uh, his approval as well. So we are going to stay tuned in regards to those. So in the next three slides, what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about what that agreement looks like. So if you recall, the legislature and governor were at odds as it relates to the supplemental and concentration funding grants increase. The legislature was proposing a 3.3% increase to the supplemental grant calculation, whereas the governor in his initial proposal was actually increasing a 15% increase to the, uh, concentration grant, um, calculation. So fortunately for us, the governor was resolute in increasing the concentration grant formula um, to support the districts that were serving the highest need communities, such as San Bernardino. However, these funds were specified and mandated in the language to be used to increase staffing, um, to support direct services to students. So this is, we do not have the discretion that we would with other funds. This is specifically earmarked to support those direct services to kids by increasing staffing levels. Additionally, the proposal proposes to pay down nearly $11 billion in deferrals, provides increased funding for special education, both one-time and ongoing, reduces the unemployment insurance rate from that 1.23% to the 0.5 for 2021, 22, as well as incremental ongoing investments for expanded learning for after-school and summer enrichment programs. Next slide. So moving on, the state continues to recognize the growing teacher shortage. And so they're, uh, continuing their efforts to invest to combat the ongoing teacher shortage and to make investments in professional development and educator effectiveness through one-time grants. Through the pandemic, the need for child nutrition services was heightened uh, as we went to remote feeding across this, for districts across the state. As a result, the governor and the legislature both recognized the importance of these programs and proposed a universal meal program that serves to provide ongoing state, uh, support to subsidize federal reimbursement rates for our child nutrition programs. A big win for child nutrition. Agreement also includes grants, um, to increase A through G completion and to expand health and wellness hubs through the community-school partnerships. Next slide. So here's what those investments look like for, um, for the state as well as San Bernardino Unified. You can see there's a lot of to be determined for San Bernardino. And that's because, as I mentioned earlier, there is still new information emerging on a daily ba, basis. We received the trailer bill language just yesterday, and we're parsing through that information as well as our lobbyists and other professionals to provide an overview on what those impacts mean to San Bernardino in particular. So as we move forward, we will work to incorporate those updated assumptions into our budget. And we'll, uh, discuss our presentation to the board at a future board date. However, there are two areas where we do know what those impacts are going to be to our budget. The first is the concentration grant funding increase of 15%. That is going to represent $21.8 million in ongoing funding to our district based on our current unduplicated pupil count percentages. And as well as the reduction in the state unemployment insurance rate. So this is highlighted in red because this is an actual reduction in expenditures. So we were in, going to incur an expenditure close to $4.9 million. It's actually going to be reduced by four, three, four, $4.3 million. So a considerable savings, uh, from what we were previously facing. Next slide. So what?
Mr. Sellins?
Um, I got them in order.
Mr. Tillman is.
Oh, he's next, okay.
Yeah, he's first. But there's one more slide. Just one more. Yeah, he's almost done.
All right.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So the, what's, what's not in the budget? So you can see from the exhaustive list that I just went through, there's not much that's not in that budget agreement. But what is conspicuously missing was the legislature's proposal for pension cost relief. Unfortunately, through the deal, uh, with the governor, they were not able to come to an agreement on any further pension cost relief, um, in this current year's budget. Next slide. So as we await the passage of the trailer and cleanup bill language, uh, district staff will, um, be attending the School Services of California Finance Conference to get additional information in terms of details on incorporating into our budget so that we may prepare a 45-day budget revision to present to the Board of Trustees, uh, in August. As part of this work, we will continue our efforts to maintain fiscal stability within our budget, um, for the current year and, uh, beyond. And to that end, we are looking to reconvene our budget subcommittees as well as to develop a budget stabilization plan that we will prepare and present to the board at a future date.
All right. Thank you. All right, our first question is coming from Mr. Tillman.
Well, the, um, increase from 50% to 65% starts this July 1?
Correct.
And do you have any idea how much the one-time grants are going to be for the teachers?
Uh, we do not. Um, the, the one-time grants, they're, the educator, educator effectiveness grant is going to come in terms of a block grant. Um, I know in the prior, as a prior recipient of a block grant for San Bernardino, we received approximately $4.1 million for that program. However, um, the investment may not be identical, so we may not receive quite as much, or we could potentially receive more. That, that information is not clear at this time.
And then, because you have three different things listed here, teacher recruitment, retention and educator effectiveness programs. I guess an example of teacher recruitment, you're going to offer a thousand dollars if you come and work for the district. Is that what it is?
So, um, that could be potentially. There's teacher housing. There, there's a lot of different, um, ways that, um, that could go. But to understand really with grants, there are usually stipulations on how those grants can be spent. So we would have to wait to gather more information before we could, um, say definitively how we would, could proceed.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Flores?
Uh, yes. Uh, Mr. Sellins, can you clarify what pension cost relief means?
Absolutely. So over the past few years, Governor Newsom has actually, um, put language into the budget bills along with the legislature to actually, uh, take state revenues, um, both prop, um, non-prop 98 revenues to make investments to the, uh, unfunded liability in both the STIRS and PURS program. As a result, districts, uh, rece- As a result, districts received a one-time relief on the pension cost contribution rate. What's important to remember, from 2013-14, when LCFF became implemented or began from Governor Brown, what's important to remember, that coincided with the unfunded liabilities both in STIRS and PURS pension programs. And as a result, as we were receiving these additional LCFF dollars, we were also receiving year-to-year increases in pension cost contributions for the district. So our increases have gone up dramatically from that end, and so we've been utilizing our LCFF increases to offset some of those expenditures.
Okay, so this says that they were not included even in AB 129 and AB 138?
Correct. So in AB, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So in AB 138, there is language about pension cost relief, but that is not specific, that does not speak to districts. There is language there. Typically, when there's pension cost relief, it can happen at the state level in terms of state employee associations or district level. There is no language that was proposed related to pension costs for districts.
But we did get some money, right? For, I think we did propose that in the budget in terms of providing one-time monies, right?
One-time monies for to buy down pensions?
Yeah.
So not to buy down pensions. So if in the budget, there are, there's, I think in the 2021, which is the year that we just closed, there was actually pension cost relief, so you actually saw a negative.
Right.
So there was no growth, but that was for the prior budget year.
Okay, it was the prior. And so do we know how much it'll be for this upcoming year?
So the pension cost increase, I'd have to get the exact number to you, but I know the STIRS rate, while both the STIRS and PURS rate actually increased. But what's important to note, in particular for the STIRS, or yes, for STIRS, it originally was projected to be 15.92%, but because of an actuarial study, it actually increased by an additional percent. So it actually went up to 16.92%.
But we have enough to cover the 15%.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, two items, only because it's under budget item, you don't have an item in here. But in terms of the, some of the COVID money, I think they're calling it ESER 1 and 2 money. Have we determined, is any of that money, use it or lose it?
So ESER money, the federal funds, as you refer to them, they actually do have deadlines to expend those funds by. If you do not expend those funds, you would potentially lose them or leave money on the table, so to speak. And I'll kind of speak to the most recent dollars, which were CAREs, which were originally to be expended by December 31st of 2020, and then that was actually extended to December 30th of 2020-21. However, the state imposed a stricter deadline for those funds of May 31st so that those funds would be expended, or they would identify those funds that hadn't been expended by districts so they could sweep those funds and expend them elsewhere before that December 30th, 2021 date.
And so that's a big deal.
It is.
Because being someone who's been in government for a long time, it's hard to spend money. So I've been trying to get people to accept the concept that for things that qualify for that funding, we should be expediting that. So I do have concerns when I say to teachers, "You can get new devices," and they say, "Well, I talked to my administrator, and they said, 'Let me check on it.'" So I think somehow we have to, at the district exec level, make the statement that any teachers who want new devices are able to get those devices, right? And there needs to be a point of contact above the site administrator, because I'm hearing that the site administrators are saying, "I'll get back to you." That's not the right answer. The right answer, as you know, is to expedite it. Even when you expedite, it's going to take time to get a bid, find the devices, and then get the devices in by the deadline. So I just hope, Mr. Irvin, that we take that action, and I don't know who it is that we call. So when I'm talking to a teacher and they say, "Well, Mr. Tillman, you said I could get a device, and you're going to give teachers new computers, but I just asked my principal, and my principal said, 'I'll check on it,'" who can they call other than their principal?
So, yeah, so we'll go ahead and take that information back. But we do know that the district has already responded to that in the past. I believe, Dr. Menares, we've talked about that. I believe that every teacher who needs a new device or any type of electronic device, the district covers that cost, and that has been ongoing prior to my arrival. Is that correct?
It's part of the refresh and replenish plan for all of our schools, to get them, to make them whole, so...
So I'm clear?
So it's clarifying, Mr. Tillman. It's the communication is what needs to be...
So my point is, so even if you just tell me who to actually call, I'll break the policy again and file a complaint. But the concern is, if I have a, I was walking today, and a teacher said, "How do I get a new computer? You said we'll get a new computers," and I asked my principal, and they said, "We're not going to get it." So my point is, who do they call?
We'll put out a communication to bring clarity to that hopefully this week. So Ms. Applegate, I know we talked about it, but so we'll get the communication out right away.
Yes, Mr. Tillman, and our EdTech department, Michelle Cleveland, and our IT department are responsible for the replenish, refresh. They can contact EdTech directly. Ask for that.
And to Mr. Solins, you are making, they are aware that the sites won't have to pay for these devices themselves, and will pay for it at the district level, right?
Yes.
That makes a big difference also. So, and I guess the other key is, now that we know that some of these monies are using and losing, which is important, because I've had some recent discussions, and everyone didn't know that, then the executive staff needs to first understand that, put dates on it, and then in your meetings, identify things that we can spend the money on. I've been saying this for a long time. So there was an issue with busing, and my point was, why would I take away bus stops right now when I can use one-time money to pay for it, right? But someone else has to understand that and say, because we have this additional funding, we can meet needs just like that. It's no different than a summer program that's going to run. And in the past, we have funded it. We're not funding it now. So my worst-case scenario is this, I don't fund the program, I have parents in the program, and in the past, they were a district student, and you're teaching them math and English in the program. We picked up the tab for seven of those kids. Why wouldn't I do that? And then to not do it and then send the money back would be a tragedy, because we all agree that there was, or has been educational loss, right? So everything that we can do to help support parents and students. And if I have a parent that is not going to be able to participate in the program only because they don't have the money, and I have free money that I'm sending back, it doesn't make any sense. So I'm never going to start fighting for student parents and employees in the community when it's common sense. And this is one of those common sense things. But I do understand that a lot of people don't understand how funding operates. I do. I work for the County Human Services, and we get federal money. So I know what it means when they say, "You use it or lose it," because at the end of the fiscal year, they're scrambling. They're saying, "Hey, Danny, you guys got to get us some quotes for 2,000 computers, and we got to get them in before the end of the year, and we have to pay for it, else we're going to lose the funding." This district is in that same predicament right now. So we need to have that sense of urgency.
And I appreciate the comments, and as part of the team, we take that back to the team and part of our planning for using those funds, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solins. I don't believe that there's any other questions, so I know that the team duly noted also what the comments that were brought or raised and the sense of urgency in the communication, I think is a big thing, because we're a pretty large district. So to get the communication out again so that everyone is on the same page. Thank you for your report.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the inquiry. Thank you.
All right, so we are now moving to 7.2, Return to Work Report. And I am TOing that over to who? Return to Work? Is that, oh, right, Dr. Funchess? Come on down.
Good evening, Dr. Rogers, Board, Lieutenant Irvin, Community Cabinet. I am here tonight to give a brief updating overview of our return to work processes and where we are at that as a precursor to our July 20th update, where we'll provide a little bit more information on returning and reopening our school sites. Next slide, please. And I wanted to thank our board once again for its measured and deliberate approach to bringing back staff in a safe and healthy manner, meaning we eased our employees back into the workplace in terms of having rotational schedules that started on May 10th. And on July 1st, we welcomed back all of our scheduled staff to full in-person work. That included classified and certificated managers and non-managers who were scheduled to work. The district continues its consistent and correct use of masks and face coverings. Just like we're doing tonight, we feel like that is essential to make sure that people feel safe when they're on our campuses and in our district departments and sites. And we also will continue the frequent sanitizing and disinfecting of high-touch areas and surfaces as we continue to reintegrate our staff in a safe and healthy way. And then finally, we'll continue to focus on proper hand hygiene, hand sanitizing stations and such. And I wanted to stop here and say, kudos to our staff, certificated, classified managers who are adhering to all of our safety protocols in place as we walk through our buildings, the Board of Ed, Second Street, the WA building, IT, and our school sites. We are encouraged by what we see. Next slide, please. And so for health and wellness, as we continue to focus on that, that is our priority. We want to make sure that all of our employees, our scholars, when they return, and our families remain safe. So from a district standpoint, our communications department continues to update the webpage for employees, all things COVID, all things safety, all things health and wellness. We're continuing in human resources to provide accommodations for any employees that may have health-related issues in terms of, or in regard to COVID. Our SBC/USD COVID-19 training continues to be in effect for all new employees that come onboard or those that may have missed it. Our COVID-19 safety plan for staff reentry, training our employees on what to do when coming into our buildings, everything from self-screening to monitoring themselves throughout the day, or if they have any symptoms. Our COVID-19 hotline, where our employees are able to provide anonymous information if they have any concerns about COVID-related issues or feel like any protocols are not up to par. They can reach out to an anonymous hotline and leave us that information, and we'll follow up. Our COVID-19 exposure protocols, which I'll go over in depth here, and we'll provide more information on the 20th in regard to exposure protocols and why that's so important for being proactive. And then finally, our SB 95 paid sick leave that we know is in effect until September 30th. Should any of our employees become sick or have any health-related issues according to, or in regard to COVID, we'll make sure that they have the 10 days or 80 hours of paid sick leave. Next slide. I wanted to spend a moment here, Board, talking about our exposure protocols and why this is so important. And over the next few weeks, and as we go back, as we come back into the school year, as we reopen, we'll spend a lot of time making sure that we reinforce the importance of having self-awareness, self-screening, self-monitoring for our employees, everyone from classified to certificated, and trickle on down to our scholars and families. And one of the first things that needs to happen on a daily basis, if any of our employees feel any symptoms or suspect that they have any health-related issues, even the sniffles, make sure that they quarantine and stay home. We're asking our employees to stay home for the benefit of themselves and others. So that's step number one. And then number two, notify a supervisor. Notify the supervisor that they will not be in so that we can take appropriate steps in terms of providing substitute coverage and even following up with the contact tracing team. And then the third step in this exposure protocol, which will really drive home, is to make sure that our employees reach out to COVID cases. That's where we document any COVID case or possible exposure to COVID-19 so that an email can be forwarded back to that individual, and they can fill out step number four is the questionnaire, where we ask specific questions about the exposure, where it may have taken place, what may have happened, who they may have been in contact with. And then our contact tracing team can do their job, making sure that we reach out to any potential employees or members of the public or anyone who may be in range of exposure. And so as we continue to bring our employees back and we get prepared to bring our scholars back, the exposure protocols and having our employees be very self-aware and self-monitor will be very important, and that's what we're embarking on now so that we can keep our employees safe and keep our district headed in the right direction.
Okay. Can that conclude? Okay, there it is. All right, we will start with Ms. Sabios.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Funchess. Just really quickly on that last slide, the exposure protocols, I just wanted to ask, in terms of testing, where at, what point does that fall into here? Because we are basically communicating that to be self-aware and very vigilant about the symptoms that you're experiencing, something as simple as the sniffles, right? So, you know, the, oh my gosh, flu season's coming, you know, the sneezing, my word just left me. But allergies, thank you so much. Allergies as well. So at what point are they being advised to get tested? Where do they go?
Yes, I'll answer that this way. So if anyone is experiencing any symptoms, we ask them to self-quarantine, and we know that quarantine is a 10-day period. So within that 10-day period, they can do two things. Come back after the 10 days or get tested and then show us proof that they are negative. So if they show proof that they are negative, then an individual can return to campus or return to our district site. If not, then we do require the 10-day quarantining.
10 days, 10 days if they no longer have symptoms.
Correct. And it could be 14 days, just depending on the weekend, right?
But when they get to the point they're going to come back, if they still have symptoms...
Can we, okay, Mrs. Sabios wants to finish. She wants to finish.
Thank you. So if they decide not to get tested, they go through the 10-day quarantine process, they get their paid sick leave?
Yes.
They never got tested. Couple of weeks down the line, they experience some type of symptom again. They go through the whole process all over again?
They can go through that. We have made provisions for that as well in our collective bargaining as well. We are handling or providing another 10 days if it took place, or if the symptoms or the exposure, sorry, if the exposure took place in one of our district sites. Yes, they can go through that process again.
Only if it occurred within the district?
Correct, that we provide the paid leave. If it's outside of the district, then we would ask them to go ahead and quarantine again. However, it wouldn't be covered by the district that time.
Thank you.
Hopefully that clarified.
Next, I had Mr. Tillman, and then he had texted me.
I'm sending Dr. Rogers texts. I'm acting like...
He is, so I have him, and then after will be...
It still works. I would encourage you to send her a text.
Dr. Flores is... I got you second.
But I know our sites are doing vaccinations. You know which sites are doing vaccinations?
Oh, once we, so next week or on July 20th, we'll have a comprehensive report on which sites are still doing vaccinations and where we are with that. We know that we were at a Royal Valley High School, I believe we're still there, but we'll have a more of a comprehensive update on where everything is.
And they were at Chavas also for a while. So I think it's good that we are having those vaccination sites. I encourage us to do more, but I also think we should advertise it, I don't know if we are on our sites, where the parents can go to get vaccinated. And on the lines of the, you know, having this extra money, I just hope that we are making it easy for people to get tested. So right now, if a parent or wants to get tested, or want to get their child tested, are we able to tell them where they can go to get tested?
Yeah, we are providing that information, and it's on our website. They can go to this place or that place, or Place A or B. We do have that information readily available for parents, and we were providing that during summer school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Flores?
That was my question, too. Do we have lists of sites where they can go and get tested, our employees?
We do, and we'll provide that for you in a Friday update if needed. We have that information.
But the main thing is, do they know where they can go?
Correct. Correct. And we were providing that information during summer school. Um, and we'll continue to do so.
And our parents would also, and it's on our website.
Yes.
Where exactly is it on our website?
It's on the, the page where we, uh, uh, where it says, it's on the COVID information page.
Oh, the COVID button? Okay, okay, right. Icon, the COVID icon?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wyatt?
Um, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Dr. Funches. Just real quick, on, on the COVID-19 hotline, what is, uh, used for and where can our folks find it?
Gotcha. So within our sites and departments, uh, located on walls or located on different partitions, our employees will find a COVID hotline, uh, number, uh, QR code. If they find any issues within their site where it may not be up to par according to their perspective or any safety concerns, they can call that number or scan into that QR code and leave a message. And then that information will be, uh, will go over to Eric Batier's office and we will handle it from there.
That was my next question.
Follow-up from, or we'll follow up with that employee.
Very good, thank you.
Um, okay. Okay, um, Board Member Rosales, did you have a? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. I wanted to go back to page two, which is the welcome back piece. And then, um, looking at the classified management where, you know, they're returning to campuses. And then on the bottom is focused on proper hygiene, hand hygiene, cleanliness etiquette and so forth. With the school sites, once we start coming back, do you see any issues with hiring individuals? Do you see that we are, you know, we need to hire more individuals when it comes into, uh, maintenance and cleaning of school sites? Do we have proper staffing for each school site to make sure that we're doing that appropriately?
Mrs. Medina, our summer school gave us a good picture, a good test run of what we might need. And we feel like we're prepared in terms of the custodial staff that we have. Uh, we are exploring the possibility of adding support staff like rec aids, um, instructional aids, just because we have the AB 86 funding and we may need more rec aids on hand. But in terms of the custodial staff, we feel like we're appropriate, appropriately staffed there.
Okay, yeah, because they're going to be doing a lot more work, I imagine, with making sure the campuses are.
Correct, but with some of the guidance that have come out, come down lately, uh, it may not be as stringent as we once thought. We'll be prepared.
Superintendent Irvin?
Well, I was going to say, one thing I want to add is, um, to the board is remember as we come back, we're going to over-communicate this summer to let the parents know what are those safety protocols? And, and, and as well, remember for the staff and parents, we're pushing forward this, to this evening. Uh, the board's going to, um, vote on, uh, on the consent agenda. We have Parents Square and that's going to be another mechanism that we'll be using to over-communicate on exactly, um, what our processes and protocols are as they return to work. So again, we're going to have one main communication platform, hopefully in the future. And so everyone, even in this room, will have that one app, that one, uh, app that they can, that will communicate with our protocols. So we're looking forward to that. So, but we'll keep the board updated and we'll keep the community updated. But I think we're very confident that we're ready to come back, um, fully.
Okay. I think that's it. I'm not seeing any other questions, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And now we are going to move to 7.3 Superintendent's Entry Plan Report. Is that you, Superintendent Irvin?
That is me, but, uh, Ginger will be working closely with me.
Okay.
And so, uh, she's going to go through at high level on what the plan is and then gauge with the board, do we have any questions?
All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, good evening, President Dottie Rogers, Board, Cabinet and Community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share the Superintendent Entry Plan with you. I know that, uh, since about the day after he was appointed, I've been working very closely with Mr. Irvin to make sure that, um, he is able to gather input from our community. He's been immediately interested in learning about San Bernardino City Unified School District, in hearing the voices of the people that make up our family here at SBC USD and, uh, to use that input to help develop goals for our district long-term. It's just my honor tonight to be able to share this plan with you. So next slide. Superintendent Entry Plan really is a guide to help, uh, Mr. Irvin learn about our district and about the things that are important to our families and our community. Is, there's, uh, four main goals in this plan. Two of them are centered around developing positive working relationships, both with you as a board and also with our, our staff and stakeholders in the community. Also conducting an organizational assessment to understand the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities that we have as a district. And then to evaluate, um, our programs, the curricular, instructional, operational, social, emotional and wellness programs in our district. Next slide. There are three main strategies that we're using to collect information from the community and help Mr. Irvin to learn about SBC USD. First are in-depth interviews. I know that he's conducted some of those with you and with other members of our, um, district. Then we have also our listening and learning forums, which are larger group meetings in order to get our, as much input as possible from as many stakeholders that are knowledgeable about our district as possible. We've already held a couple of those, uh, to engage our management and site leaders and to get their input early in this process. And then also meet and greets, which are less formal, um, opportunities to meet with stakeholders in our community who may not have the, the depth of knowledge in our district, but still have opinions about what's important for our school district to provide to the community. Next slide. You can see that there are a variety of stakeholders that we will be engaging through this process. And I can tell you that, uh, Mr. Irvin has already either formally or informally met with hundreds of people in SBC USD. This plan, however, will intentionally allow him to hear the voices of thousands of stakeholders, from our parents to our teachers and, um, other non, um, management-certificated staff to our key community partners, to union leaders, elected officials, you name it. We're really trying to make sure that all of those voices and all of those opinions are weighing in on the things that are important to establish as goals for the direction of our school district going forward. But I want to also know that these aren't the only ways that, um, Mr. Irvin is hearing input. He's also already reviewed input that we've gotten over the last several years in terms of, especially in this last year, in terms of LCAP meetings where we've gotten lots of parent and stakeholder input. Town halls, I know he's listened to those online to hear the voice of our parents in real time and the things that they've been caring about and are concerned about. And also surveys and other artifacts that have been established by our district to identify what's important to us. Next slide. So you can see on this timeline, uh, that this isn't a short, I mean, it is a relatively short term in terms of it's this year, but it's not something that just happens immediately and we're over. Uh, essentially, he's worked on, um, the document review and the interviews. And then over the next several months, we'll be engaging in our listening and learning forums as well as several meet and greets throughout the community. And then in November, you can expect that we will be coming back to you, um, so that Mr. Irvin can share what he has learned through this listening and learning tour. So, and, and present to you the findings and the voices that he's heard throughout this time. Following that, we'll be building a collaborative process, um, for goal-setting so that in about January or February, you as a board will be able to, um, vote on the goals that will set the future direction of our district. And so this process really is designed to be a comprehensive, uh, look at what's important to SBC USD and where our district should be going forward. Uh, next slide. And with that, I want to thank you for, um, really making, listening to our community an important part of our district. Um, and I can tell you that it's been an important part of what Mr. Irvin wants to do here in SBC USD since well before he actually started working with us. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, and we have a question from Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work. Um, I do have a question with regarding the, the surveys and comments and so forth. I know in previous times, we would get even, it was really thick, but a booklet of all the public's comments or of the parents' comments or concerns. And so not only were they able to draft, okay, these are the top key areas, um, numbered sometimes, but it's also where we were able to go through the back and actually read the comments ourselves. So I'm curious if that's something that we can also provide. So that way we could look at the numbers, but we can also directly see the comments of the parents. Um, because sometimes even with the report, it doesn't really fully reflect exactly what they're speaking of.
Well, the answer is yes. We're actually going to be using thought exchange for some of these listening and learning forums, which allow us to get to a very granular level about what individuals are, um, saying and then what's resonating with among the other parents. So, so yes, that system will be in place and we will be using it with our parents as well as all of our internal stakeholders.
Yeah, and I want to be, expand a little bit on that. So just keep in mind, as we go through this process, it is going to be a five or six-month process. And also part of that process, keep in mind, I'm going to be in the classrooms as well. I'm going to be on the ground. Typically, I'm on the, in the classrooms, uh, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays from eight to 12. Uh, but aside from that, I'll be doing the meet and greets. I'll be doing the, um, listening and learning forums. And again, by that, by, by the time we get to the end of that, it'll be about 2,000 or 3,000. And the goal would be this, when we get to the end of that, the goal would be to identify what are those four to five goals as we think about the next three to four years. And when we look at those three to four goals or five goals, then we have to think about what are the priorities? And I know some of the board members here have talked about, we want to know what are those five to seven goals or, you know, three to five goals, whatever the case may be, but what are the priorities? And then under those priorities, what are the strategies? What are we, what are those strategies that we're going to employ to ensure that we meet those goals? And then most importantly, what are those key metrics? What are those key performance indicators? And all of that, ladies and gentlemen, has to be aligned to the LCAP. It has to be aligned across the board. And so we're already getting that information as we're, as we're doing meet and greets. We're doing these listening and learning forums so far. We're gathering information and we're starting to build out things. But hopefully by November, the goal is to come to the board saying, here's the four to five goals that we've identified. Here's our thoughts on the priorities. We will go a little bit deep and, and, and go into the weeds with the board on the strategies and as well as what are those key performance indicators or metrics? And then come, give the board time to think through those things. Then we come back in January, the board says, yes, we agree, let's move forward. And then they give us five, six months to notify the entire community on what we're doing as of July 1st of the next year, because we want that six months to let people know what we're doing and why. So the goal would be, is to be very clear, here's the goals. We want to make sure there's an alignment between the LCAP goals and the, the, the goals going forward and, and whatever the district goals are. And then as part of that, we have to look at what are the values, vision and mission? To either, um, clarify what those are, but everyone in the organization needs to know what the values, vision and mission are. Even, and they could be the same. We don't know that, but there'll be the values, vision and mission. We just want to redefine those or confirm or continue what we're having clearly what the goals are going forward for the next three to five years. Um, and then obviously, the board at some point, along with the, the district and the team, start looking at strategic planning, again, the process that you've gone through before. So some of it may be the same, some of it may be adjusted, it may change, we don't know that. Um, but it is important that on the other side of this pandemic, we really start looking at what does equity access and innovation truly look like? Um, and I think that the district, I'll be honest, I've said this to each board member and community members. As the district is poised to take it to the next level, we can be very successful as a large urban district. But again, it's going to take some time. So, um, I would implore you to be patient, um, that is not going to happen overnight. Uh, but there is a difference between the meet and greets and the listening and learning forum tours. That's completely different. And the last thing I want to add is, the way we deliver services starting August 2nd is going to be completely different as well. So we're working through those things, just be patient.
All right, thank you so much. And then there's also with regards to, um, in the future, looking at the future, if there's a, a, uh, maybe a community meeting that you have, a superintendent's where you're continuously, uh, listening as well. So it's not just during the listening tour, but it's a continuous work to where you're, you're listening to everyone's needs and, and then trying to incorporate that with, uh.
Yeah, good point. Let's talk about that, that's a good point.
And the future, and this, I'm not, not talking about this right now, but as we move forward, once.
Yeah, so one of the things I will be doing is I'll have a superintendent parent advisory committee. So I'm glad you mentioned that. And that will be an advisory committee where there's one or two parents from every school site, 72 parents in, or, and they represent the, that's, that, that school site. And those individuals meet with the superintendent monthly. And there'll be those parents who are not typically involved in any committee, but they represent that school committee, community. And they will meet with the superintendent regularly. So we'll be always, I'll always be having ongoing conversations with them about, you know, what, hearing their voice and hearing what those issues and concerns are out there. But also remember, we have D-LAC, we have DAC. The other piece of this, don't forget, is we're going to have teacher advisory committees. And I've already been working with Dr., um, Applegate and also.
Teacher advisory? Teacher advisory, you said?
Yeah, we'll have teacher advisory committees in literacy. There'll be one in math, there'll be one in science, theme, technology. And that again is one rep per every site. And again, we'll be trying to get all those voices on a regular basis because if we're going to change the, the landscape in literacy, we need to hear the teacher voice. If we're going to change the landscape in math, we need to hear their voice. So there'll be multiple opportunities. And then the, the last thing I'll say is community. We're definitely going to have a community forum, whether it's an equity coalition, whether it's the superintendent community forum, whatever the case may be. We're going to have those established, so we're always getting ongoing communication about what's working, what's not working, how do we get better? And we're going to incorporate that into, uh, this final goal-setting document that we put forth to the board. So this way, as we go forward, we've heard the voice of the community, we've heard the voice of our stakeholders. And then we want to make sure, whatever those final goals are, it's aligned to the voice that we're hearing. It's not what we, what, what we want to do is what we've heard out there. And then again, we'll align those priorities and strategies and then obviously those key metrics.
Right.
Um, and key performance indicators to that.
Thank you so much, and thank you.
I'm sorry, my mic was off. Dr. Flores?
Uh, yes, uh, Superintendent Irvin, um, in your listening and learning forums, um, I know, I note that you have teachers here and I'm assuming you mean also counselors, uh, school psychologists and speech therapists are included in, in that as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, typically, yeah. We typically say certificated staff, but yes, teacher, certificated staff. And we can change that on that as that document goes out.
Or you could say educators or something like that, because, um, you know, all of us, I mean, our, our, our community and I've wanted more counselors, let's see what the counselors have to say. Uh, our school psychologists, you know, what are their issues or what are their concerns? And I don't even know if we have enough, uh, speech therapists, you know? Uh, and what are, you know, what, what, do we need more? Do we, I mean, I mean, you have to assess, you know? And I, I know you will, because you're very thorough, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you, Ms. Altavarez. And we will now move. 8.0, reports and comments. 8.1, board members. I'll start to my left and we'll work our way down. Board Member Sabios? We are at comments now. Board Member comment?
Well, just, um, want to say thank you to everyone for coming out. I'm really excited to be here, um, see everybody. I'm so glad that we're coming back to in-person. Um, thank you so much for the information, for the hard work. Um, and I just, I really, you know, um, I don't think I've officially welcomed, uh, Doc, uh, Mr. Irvin, but welcome. Um, and congratulations, uh, Dr. Menares and to, uh, Dr. Esquivel. Esquivel. Um, and nothing, I'm very excited. I look forward to the upcoming year.
Thank you. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, kind of echoing what Ms. Sabios said, just, uh, welcome, Mr. Irwin. And great to see you in person at our, our first board meeting back to this wonderful board room. And, uh, again, congratulations to Dr. Menares and, uh, Dr. Esquivel as well. Great to have you on our team and looking forward to the work that you'll be doing, uh, with our community and our staff. Very important work, as we all know, and glad that we have that position on board as well. Um, just looking forward to our students coming back this year. Uh, like we heard already earlier, our, our summer school and extended school year were a really good test run for us to, uh, see how our protocols are, are in place and if they're working effectively and to, to gauge that. We've heard some concerns, but I think they've been pretty minimal. I haven't really heard anything too much out there and hopefully that's a good sign for us coming back. I know there are some concerns on, on the social distancing, um, at the beginning of the year when we talk about loading of the classrooms. So, you know, I know I brought that question up and just how is that going to be possible with social distancing, especially at the three-foot range? And, um, you know, I know normally we have a lot of kids in class. I think that's a big concern to our staff as well and probably some of our families out there. But, uh, really looking forward to getting back in the person in every way possible. And I think this is a big first step for us as a board. So I'm really glad for a board that we're back here as well. Great to see our colleagues and some people out in the audience as well, so. Great to see our colleagues and some people out in the audience as well, so.
Dr. Flores?
I would like to also echo what my colleagues have said, welcome Superintendent Irvin, and welcome and congratulations, Dr. Monades, Deputy, new Deputy Superintendent. We expect a lot from you. Welcome Dr. Esquivel to our district. You'll find us very demanding and impatient, but we will honor, you know, timeframes and so forth, and look forward to your leadership and your contribution to our team. And welcome. And I also would like Superintendent Irvin's wife, Lorena, and his daughter, Sofia, to please stand. Let's welcome them.
Welcome.
Por favor. Bienvenidos. Sofia, I'm sorry to embarrass you. So anyway, and I just wanted to say that I'm looking so forward to our new journey, all of us. We, you know, we've been together a long time, we, and we're all for our students and our educators, our parents. We, we want the best for everybody. And in honor of that, I want to stand and show you my jacket. My jacket is La Diosa, La Diosa de Maíz. It's the Mayan mother, she's the Mayan mother of, of harvest and rebirth, and we have the seeds, all our seeds that we're planting, and you see the corn, and it's a symbol of what's going to come next, of what we're going to grow together, lo que vamos a sembrar, verdad? Lo que vamos a cosechar, and so what we're going to plant and harvest. And so I look forward to working with all of you, all of us together, and so, un honor, bienvenido, bienvenida. Thank you.
Mrs. Salas Medina?
Can add much to what was said, so I, I'm just excited to be back in person, to see people, you know, in person, so I'm really excited. I wanted to, of course, congratulate again, Board Member Sabayos, it's, this is your first time coming back, well, being in the building, so I, I'm really excited to have you on board. And of course, again, congratulations to our Superintendent Irvin, our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Monades, and then of course...
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, thank you, and also want to welcome physically Mr. Irvin and our most recent board member, Ms. Sabayos, it's good to have you in the house. Congratulations to Dr. Monades.
Use your Roosevelt.
There you go, want to welcome. And it was, it was weird coming back, because we've been gone for what, over a year?
Fifteen months.
Fifteen months, but it's good to make the first step. And you know, I know it's a challenge for me to work with new superintendents, and over the years, I've been a board member, when I first went to CSBA and they said the role of a board member is to create policy, and there was a period after that. I was confused then, and I'm just as confused about it now, because I don't see my role as just setting policy. I don't have any, and I don't think any board member should limit themselves to that, because as, as board members, we play a key role, and we hear from the community concerns that they have. And to me, the, the best way to be successful is when someone tells you something that's common sense. We have a unique role where we can ensure that common sense things get done, right? And so, it's no different than talking about the money tonight. The big question had to be, is, is there, is there a timetable on the money, and is it use it, use it or lose it? And I've been asking the question, because I know the consequences of it if you don't, because if you think the money's always going to be there, then you will literally not spend the money and have it taken away. And so, a good example is I talked about the summer program, and I was told that we're going to evaluate the programs, and some of the programs may be good, but that's not the, that's not where we're at with this. This is literally, you have the ability, you have hundreds of millions of dollars, you can spend some of that money to service parents that show up. Remember, the district's only going to be charged for the students who show up. So this is a parent that's saying, I want my kid to do better in English and in math, and this program offers it, why wouldn't we do it? So I, I, I'm never going to be quiet on that. I mean, I, it still may not happen, but it's not going to happen because I didn't try, because to me, that's a tragedy, right? The same thing with making sure that the teachers and staff get new equipment, and you're only going to do it if you start the process now. The clock is ticking, so we all should be in that frame of mind, what can this money be used for, what does it qualify for, and how, how can it benefit our district, our students, and our parents, and our community? And spend the money in ways that, of course, there's, there's guidelines on how it can be spent, there's guidelines in terms of what it's restricted for, but that's what Mr. Sol is here for. He tells us what we can spend the money on, and we need to spend that money. The worst thing we could do is not spend the money. And also for the furniture, we know that during COVID, we put a bunch of the furniture in bins, some of, some of the tack came off, I understand, because it got hot, that's okay, because we have money to buy new furniture, but it has to go past the site administrators. There's only 80 people watching this meeting, that means I have a whole bunch of people that work for the district that aren't listening to this meeting. And the problem, because once the board makes a decision and gives the rest to the superintendent, the challenge is making sure that it gets down to the sites, so that when a teacher goes to their site administrator and says, the board said I can get a new computer and my current device is eight years old, then the obvious answer is, yes, you can, and whatever the process is to do it, then we do it. But I'm never going to give up on that, because it would be, what's the alternative? That I don't say it, and a, a teacher lives with an eight-year-old device, and literally, I give money back that could have been spent on that device? So I, I, I just encourage Mr. Irvin to make sure we find a way to empower our staff to get the new equipment, so they can better serve their students, and, and, and make sure we tell the site administrator, it's not coming out of their budget, because it's coming out of this COVID money that we have, that's hundreds of millions of dollars, so let's put it to the best use. And with that, I just say, thank you, and, and I still want to thank all the parents and the students, but I will say this, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and this board proved during the pandemic that your safety is number one to us, and that hasn't changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, and I can assure you, you have drilled it home, because I have saw Superintendent Irvin, like, write a square and then rewrite the square and then check the square and then check it again, but again, we know that communication is important, and so I think all of us up here are in agreement with you, we definitely want funding to go to our students and to the needs that we have, and so we're definitely in agreement with you. I was about to make my comments, but as you and Dr. Flores, I'm scared to let her say something else again, because she might say the only thing I want to say to...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not going to say...
Go ahead.
I just, I think, apologize, Mr. Solins, we're remiss in also welcoming you.
You did say what I was going to say.
Did I? Well, I was thinking, and I kept looking over there, and I go, oh my goodness, we forgot to welcome Mr. Solins.
No, I got you, I got you.
It's because we've already adopted you.
We do work together as a board, and it's just, it's just different, it's been 15 months, we're cleaning it up, but I knew it, I knew, see? But, but that's how much we work together as a board, we think alike, we catch, catch things, but I do want to formally say, you know, Mr. Solins, we just started talking to you, just like you've been here, but we've been on Zoom as the community knows, so it feels like we've been together, but formally, we want to say to you, welcome to the team, we appreciate you, and you did a wonderful presentation, so. And then I want to say, as everyone, it's just good to be back, it's different, it feels just different, I can't believe it's been that, that long, but again, we're just glad to be back, to be here on behalf of just supporting the district that we all so much love for all of the work that you all do, we can't thank you enough, we never knew it was going to be like this for that long, but you all held tight and you just did amazing things that we couldn't have done without you, so we appreciate you so much in our resilience, we couldn't believe it, we're hiring superintendents and doing all types of things, but that's the type of district we are, we do work together, and we just love you all for what you do, so thank you so much, we appreciate you, and looking forward to being in this room more and having a, a formalized something for Superintendent Irvin, who, who wouldn't want anything except for just go to work. So I'm now going to move to 8.2, Superintendent and staff.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. One, congratulations again to Dr. Monades and Dr. Esquivel. I'm looking forward to working with both of them on our team. Welcome, Mr. Solins, for your service so far, and I know that you and I have only been here, you know, a little less than a month, but, a little over a month, but we're going to make it work. Couple of quick things, San Andreas High School, again, I wanted to say that they earned their six-year WASC accreditation, so congratulations to our Principal Dory Stratton and the staff at San Andreas High School for a job well done, I think that's very important, always good when you get a six-year accreditation, so very important. Also, interesting, Royal Valley and Cajon High School both made the CIF baseball finals, first time in each school's history, so very important. And then our Director of Transportation, Maria Espinoza, named CASA, Classified Manager of the Year, so we're taking home a lot of awards this week. And then, this is something that we talked about today, but I want to thank Assembly Member James Rommel for securing a $335,000 grant to help our Student Wellness and Support Services Department's enhanced mental health programs as we come out of this pandemic, and I'll be participating in the check presentation sometime this month, and we'll keep the board updated on that. And I will add by saying, and I hear Mr. Tillman, he's right, that we definitely need to make sure that we use those dollars to provide support to our students on the other side of this pandemic. And then the main thing for us is, because myself, we're still about a month in, I know Mr. Solins is a few days in, actually, he hasn't even started yet, but, but we do definitely need to make sure that we have a plan, and we have to ask the board and the, and the community to be patient as we think through this, but we definitely need to have a plan. So when we do move forward with providing services, we want to make sure we have a plan, so we want to be successful with that. And, and obviously, the goal is to make sure that we provide all the support for students, and again, I agree, we don't want to leave any money on the table, and it is use it or lose it, but we are, we have been talking for the last two to three weeks about how do we utilize those dollars, but again, we've also had several retreats, including the Saturday, but one thing, I will say that I always plan, we have to plan, we have to plan well for effective implementation, and most importantly, if there are students and staff and families out there that need support that they're not getting, they just need to reach out, and they need to call directly to the superintendent's office if they're not getting the support they need. I'll be very clear, everyone has my cell phone, just pick up the phone and call me, and we'll make it work. And then the other issue is, in terms of the, the staff needing technology, we will make sure tomorrow, I'll work with Dr. Monades and the team, and we'll make sure that that message goes out, and if I have to, I'll send a message from me to all staff and reminding them that they need technology, they need support, whatever they need, they need to let us know, and we'll make it happen. But it's important that staff know directly today, just reach out and give me a call, most staff have my email address, everybody has my email address, send me an email. I have staff members right now sending me emails, text messages, asking questions, my number, email address is open, anyone out of the 8,000 employees can contact me at any time, and I will respond to them. So, I mean, there's no secret, my phone number is. So I just want to be clear, if any staff member in the district is not getting the support they need, just reach out to the superintendent, and then obviously, we'll get you the support you need immediately. So I want to be very clear on that, so, but we will be coming forward with a plan very soon in terms of our budget. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Irvin.
Oh, I want to turn that over to Dr. Monares, sorry, oops.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. So I wanted to update the board and the community on the roadmap for returning to schools for 21, 22 school year, it's hard to believe we are doing that. The task force met two weeks ago, and they gave us feedback on the draft roadmap that we have developed. I do want to thank our communications team and the other individuals that have been pulling this together, the document is coming together very nicely. The, the roadmap task force let us know that overall, the document is very comprehensive, and yet, it is almost too much for them, was some of the feedback from our parents, and then a little bit more clarity in some different areas, right? So different opinions depending on who's reading it. So we're taking that feedback, we will be meeting with the task force again on July 14th, improving upon that, it will be available in English and in Spanish. And then to help the families that don't want to read too much, and not just our families, our employees as well, communications is putting together a pamphlet that will be mailed to all of our homes, including our employees. It'll be kind of a cheat sheet of what is in the roadmap, letting them know where they can find the roadmap on the website once it's done, as well as links to elements on our roadmap. So we'll be sending out a pamphlet, it'll give us, them the overview of it, it'll give them links to where they can go, and anyone who wants more detail can then go into the website, and we'll have paper copies available for anyone who requests that, as well as at our schools. So we are ready to get this going for our school year, to welcome our scholars back, making sure that our families feel very safe and confident in what we've been providing for them, and ensuring them that, that the schools are ready. And, and our tagline is that we're better, better together, welcome back, because we do know that we are better when we're together, we know that, we have done the best that we can in the virtual setting, but we are welcoming everybody back and making sure they're all safe. So just an update on that, we will be ready for that when the start of the school year happens. And then I do want to just take a moment and thank the board for the, the, the welcome to the new position as the deputy, as well as Mr. Irvin and staff. I'm really excited to have this opportunity to take the district to the next level, working with the team, and just really coordinating and aligning services to support our schools. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Monares. Welcome again. Oh, there's another one.
We have a couple of announcements. We want to alert all of our families out there that on July 23rd, we will host an Operation Student Recovery, Welcome Back. So many of our community members, including our district staff, will be canvassing neighborhoods to get students to be aware of when school starts, and also helping to connect them with resources that they may need in order to be successful in school. Also, on July 27th, we will have our Back to School Extravaganza, which is an opportunity for our families to connect with community, and also for us to be able to provide them resources. So we will have backpack giveaways, school supplies, and Chromebooks that will be provided to students. So we're really excited about those opportunities, and we're just elated that we're going to be able to welcome students back to school in August. Thank you.
What date is that, Dr. Rodriguez?
The Back to School Extravaganza is July 27th.
27th, and where at?
It is going to be at the 66ers Stadium.
Oh, wow, okay. What time?
It will be, I was asking too many details this morning, this afternoon, it will be, it'll be an all-day event.
It's starting at?
I believe it's starting at 11 o'clock.
You're going to send a, do you have a flyer?
We'll provide that information in the, in the Friday report.
Because people are watching, I just wanted to know, the 27th at the 66ers and...
And the information's also on social media.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Terma Michael, 9.0 action items, 9.1 approval of the Personnel Report Number 22, dated July 6, 2021, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. 移到了
As presented.
移到了
Second.
All right, let's prepare to vote. Thank you, motion carried, 9.2, approval of the mileage and cell phone amounts fiscal year 2021, 2022.
移到了 Second.
It has been moved in second, let's prepare to vote.
Can we just clarify, just so that they can clarify, so this was at the last board meeting, and luckily, I spoke with Mr. Funches and mentioned that it was at the total amongst all the staff within the, within the department, so, just for those that...
Correct, those are district-wide totals.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I'll go ahead and do a verbal vote. Ms. Ceballos?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Dr. Dottie Rogers? Aye.
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 And Mr. Tillman. All right. It's unanimous. We're now going to 9.3, Approval of the 2021-2022 Consolidated Application and Reporting System Cars Spring Submission.
Voue moved.
It moved in second. Do I need to do a verbal? Okay. Great. Motion carried. We are now at 10.0 Consent Items.
Voue moved. Second.
Okay. It moved in second. Are there any items to pull?
Yes, I have 10.5.
Are there any others? Right. Go ahead and vote on the remainder. Did you capture that, Ms. Cunningham? All right. 10.5 is being taken out, and we're going to vote on the remainder for all the others. Thank you. Motion carried. Or now, we are back at 10.5?
Yes. And I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you so much for adding the contract as well the budget area. I mean, that gives me insight on it. I really don't have much questions, other than the question I do have is, so I'm trying to clarify, I see, you know, I get confused with the ESAR and then ESAR, and this one's ESAR II. So then with this account and this funding, is this something that we receive from the state to deal with COVID, you know, training, professional services? Or is this something that we're pulling away from our general budget that is not necessarily coming from the state? So I'm just trying to clarify with that. Oh.
Great question. So the ESAR II, these are federal dollars, so they're restricted, so they don't pull from the unrestricted side of the general fund.
Okay. Perfect.
So these are those one-time uses.
Okay. And then with, with the area there, it says something regarding, and let me get it close up. It's cohort testing. And I believe it's in that, one of the sentences there. So what does that mean? Is that something that we're going to be doing testing at the school site? Or is that, I don't know if you can clarify with what that means? Cohort testing? And this is, this is a group that will be working with COVID prevention or monitoring?
That's in the staff analysis.
The third, fourth, fifth.
Ms. Medina?
Yes.
So the cohort testing would only be done if there is, if the contact tracing team deems it necessary? And then that COVID liaison at the school site would actually ask the families if they could do the test, because the family has to agree to the testing. But we would have, this, this contract would allow us to do the testing if indeed the agreement is with the family and the student.
Well, then that's what they'll be able to provide?
They could.
They could.
They could.
Yeah. And then, because it's a lot of money, so I'm curious to see if this was any of this area we were able to do ourselves. It may not, because I know Eric Vitier handles that department.
It was not, yeah, it was not to exceed. So remember, if we decide by November and the restrictions are relaxed, then we don't have to pay the $6 million. So again, this is on a contract basis only, and it's up to not to exceed $6 million. But it would be, it's going to be a COVID liaison, COVID-19 liaison at every single site. However, if we decide not to use all those services, then the amount will be reduced. But I believe this contract, correct me if I'm wrong, was for a year when we originally talked about it.
Yes, it is only for a year, but our intention is to monitor the use, to, again, of course, watch what's going on at the state level, and then slowly wean away as necessary. We wanted to make sure our schools had the supports they need, and our families did. But we do not anticipate needing all of this, but we are going with the Cadillac version.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Because it says actually for six months, so it's a six-month contract with this one specifically. And then if we want to continue, then it would have that option to continue.
Correct.
Correct.
We made sure, I'm sorry, Mr. Irvin, we did make sure that we could exit out and without any penalties. We did do that.
Right. And that's why we've been adding, and if you notice on all of our agenda items, we add the staff analysis. And again, those are good questions, so...
Thank you. And then, were you going to?
I was just going to add, I asked a similar question on this item, and it is that not to exceed. So if there are services such as training that's not required for the duration, we wouldn't be responsible for those expenses.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Dr. Flores?
Yes. As Ms. Medina also stated, I really appreciate the transparency for the board in providing staff analysis. And not only that, the actual contract, so that we can thoroughly read it. And I think, and everybody, not just us, but all the community, because, you know, these are public funds. And so greatly appreciate that, Superintendent Irvin.
All right. If there are no other questions, can we entertain a motion here?
Voue moved.
Okay. Second.
Voue moved in second. And Mrs. Cunningham, I'm sure you captured voices. Dr. Flores and, and Dr. Wyatt, did you second?
I motioned.
You've moved. Dr. Wyatt moved, and Dr. Flores second. All right. Motion carried. Thank you. We're at 11.0 Summary of Board Members Requests. Is that you, Ms. Ontiveros?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I actually captured three that we need to follow up on from this evening. First was from Mr. Danny Tillman, who requested an expedited process for filling teacher requests for new devices. I know that Ms. Applegate noted that they could contact our Education Technology Department, but Mr. Irvin pledged to send out communication tomorrow, so I'm sure we'll be following up on that as well. Mr. Tillman asked which sites were offering vaccinations, and Dr. Funches noted that we would be including that information and update on it in our July 20th meeting to the board or presentation to the board. And then Dr. Flores asked for details about the Back to School Extravaganza on July 27th. And Dr. Rodriguez provided most of that information, but we'll definitely make sure the rest of it is included in the Friday update to the board.
And just to add, it's 9:00 to 4:00 at the 66er Stadium on July 27th.
All right, parents, you got that?
Also, you added that parents have to RSVP.
RSVP.
Who do they?
They will call Family Engagement Office.
Okay. They have to call?
They can call or email. Information is on our website.
Is it going to be on our parent square?
Yeah.
Oh, it will be also. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome. Okay. 12.0.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Oh, I can't believe it.
Let me get it right. Better Together, Welcome Back. Thank you so much for all of you attending tonight and watching us. We appreciate you, and we will see you next time, and God bless.